Regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas will now come to order September 3rd, 2015, 6:01 PM. Item number two is the invocation and pledge. The invocation will be by Reverend Aguirre of Emmanuel Church. Reverend?
Um, for you, we thank you for the time to come together as we discuss the future that you have for the city. I ask that you will bless the agenda tonight, or that you will bless the council members, law enforcement, and every city official that is here tonight as we strive to walk the path you have given us. Lord, we thank you again for everything, the provisions you have given us, the blessings you have given the city, and I ask that you will continue to do so. Lord, we love you and we thank you for your strength, for dying on the cross, and you in our city. Yours in the name of the Lord.
Amen. Go face the flag, hand over heart. Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you Reverend Aguirre. Item number three is the roll call, Ms. Precifka.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Mr. Hall. Item number four is presentation and discussion concerning updates on the proposed budget for FY 2015-16.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
Just wanted to report that the budget has had several amendments to it since the proposed budget of August 6th. Obviously, we've made the amendments on the hotel motel tax grant side, as well as the funding for the digital sign that was placed in the budget a year or so ago, and we're asking for an additional position in community development.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Mr. Pearson, could you reiterate a little bit on what we're doing on the budget with the police force?
The police budget is an increase over the last year slightly. The police force remains static based at, as far as staffing levels, based at the chief's recommendation. He and I have had extensive discussions about that. I know there's probably a number of citizens here tonight that think otherwise, but the chief is confident that the staffing levels of the police department are adequate. There has been some changes in the last year in the command structure. The chief and I have been discussing that in about August of last year. He felt like that it was too much responsibility and too much to call on the lieutenant over investigations to also be over patrol. With seventeen patrol positions at that time, I totally agreed with him. During this last year, there has been a restructuring of the command structure and the lieutenant over patrol, Lieutenant Garrett is here tonight, and he has sacrificed a lot where family and time is concerned because he rotates his shifts and he drives with patrolmen night and day. And I applaud him for that because he's worked so many years to get to an eight-to-five position, but he is doing that, and we do have a lieutenant that is chiefly over investigations at this point.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. The present, the packet was put together really well.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I commend the department heads.
Well, thank you, department heads. Item number five is a second public hearing for the proposed budget for FY 2015-16. It's a public hearing for input. All right. Item number six is a second public hearing for proposed ad valorem tax for FY 2015-2016. Moving right on. Item number seven is a consent agenda. Item number A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of August 20th, 2015. B, approval of the minutes of the special session, August 27th, 2015. Item number C, approval of the minutes of the special session of August 31st, 2015. And item D, approval of the preliminary plat for Pleasanton ISD agro-science subdivision. And you do recommend approval?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We moved to second to approve consent agenda items number A, B, C, and D. Any discussion? If none have seen the vote, it's in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Item number eight is citizens' comments. If you're a citizen over a taxpayer to the city, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Know that council and staff may not comment. You have several. Ms. Block. I'll let you know if you'll come to the, when you do come up, please come to the podium. That way it goes to the microphone. And when you get to, we'll give you three minutes. When we get to two minutes, I'll give you a sign that you got a minute left.
So I'm gonna get a buzzer.
No, I won't throw anything at you, I promise.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for listening to my concerns. If you guys do not know who I am, I am Katie Blaha. I'm owner of Virginia Twins Garden Market. I'm sorry. And we were burglarized two different times in less than a week. Over $25,000 worth of merchandise and time that they were there taking all of my possessions was over four hours. So I'm not getting into about me tonight. I want to talk about, one, I want to thank the Pleasanton Police Department for arresting one of the criminals, and I do thank them for their hard work. But there is a second one out there that his hands are just as dirty as the other one, and I want him to go where he belongs also. Third, I want to say one thing about the Pleasanton Police Department. This is coming from within the department about understaffing from multiple people that I'm not going to use their names. And also about equipment, their bulletproof vests are expired. And I've also had information that this is something that these officers pay for, for what's going on in the world today. I, for one, would like to put our officers in a safety vest that is up to standard. And also, for the pay, I would just say, I think it would be something great to offer to our officers instead of charging them for this fee. And my third thing would be, or I'm sorry, fourth, I've lost count, but educate the people how to protect themselves. Get your serial numbers for your equipment and your technology stuff. And break your name, engrave on your items, so that way if you do have a crime, that you can give the police your information and they can work more expediently with it and hopefully stop them before it goes to the pawn shop. And thank you all for hearing me, and I hope someone can prove me wrong on my numbers about the police understaffing, the equipment. And I've also heard two officers per shift, so I'd like someone to present me with that info. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yao? When you got a minute left, I'll give you a little heads up.
Hi. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Mary Yao, and I own Riada Cleaners. And my husband was working at the cleaners the day before Fourth of July and had his truck broken into in about a fifteen-minute time span that he was up on the roof. And when I got the police report, it said that they had responded in four minutes. They responded in thirty-four minutes, which I think was bad. Number two, we had to bag up the hammer that they used to break the window out and all the stuff inside the truck that they moved around. We bagged it up and physically took it down to the police station to be fingerprinted. Nobody offered to fingerprint it. Now, every time they've responded, the police have always been nothing but nice, kind, helpful, but there's no follow-up. I had a girl working for me that was stealing, and I had her on tape. Three of the Pleasanton detectives watched the tape along with my stepson, who at that time was a sheriff's deputy. They all agreed with me. I made a physical copy of that, took the USB stick down to the Pleasanton Police Department in an envelope for the investigator who was no longer there, I hear. This has been about four years ago. I've never had another follow-up call. The things that were taken out of my husband's trucks were shotguns, and they were gifts that I had given him, so they were in my name. I did not know to keep the serial number. My bad. But I was told by the county cops that I could ask the department to call the ATF and run my name and get the serial numbers. One I had bought at Walmart like twelve years ago, they said they could look through their boxes, but how long was that gonna take? The other one I bought at the gun shop in Jardanton, and he's closed down and had to send all of his stuff to the ATF. They kinda looked at me like I was speaking Chinese. So it's the follow-up. You know, they're on the spot, they're helpful, but they don't follow through. Now, this girl that was stealing from me that I gave him the USB stick for is out there, and I know that she went to work at East Coast Wings and got fired for stealing there as well. Side note, her brother is the one that killed the baby. What is. Nice family. So, you know, we gotta get these people off the street because these are the ones that are doing it. Time's up? Anyhow, thank you.
You still got a second?
We do appreciate you, but we want you to have enough people and enough help so that you can do your job to the best of your ability.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you do for us, but...
Thank you. Ms. Israel.
Mayor, Council, Genie Israel, 910 Abilene Street. I'm here to talk to you about considering a possible vote to, for the people come next May for a dedicated tax for contracted street maintenance. And I bring this up, certainly infrastructure, for all of you who know me, know that that is what I live and breathe. And we have done an excellent job in this city of improving infrastructure, and I certainly take my hat off to the city manager, as well as the street department utilities and everybody that's involved. But we run into a situation here where we need to use our street department to follow up and to take care of projects that we're on. So they get pulled off a lot in order to do other work, which absolutely is fine. I don't have an issue with that. What I have an issue with is the inability for us to keep up with regular street maintenance. We have two bonds right now that are not associated to what I'm talking about. They're associated with the rehabilitation of streets, and that is fantastic. The problem being is that we're not going to get to a majority of the streets with $8 million. It's going to take oh-so-much more to get there, and in the master plan, we're hoping to accomplish that in ten years. Well, during that period of time, even though the fact is we never really had great streets to begin with, and we don't have basin, so forth, under that, the streets that are existing, we have issues that I think need to be looked at as soon as they're brought up. There's many intersections that, if they can't be rehabilitated, they need to have at least their potholes addressed all the time, continuously. And maybe this possible option, if you decide to explore it, will provide that for the citizens and allow them to have a voice in it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Davila.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Amado Davila. My wife and I own, once upon a time, a gifted antique shop downtown on Main Street, and we were broken into Monday night. Our losses weren't as much as Virginia Twins. We lost about, approximately about $1,000 in damages, broken and damaged stuff. And first of all, I want to thank Pleasanton Police Department and commend the officers that went over there. They were very informative to me and very professional. My concern is that I found out later that the person that committed the crime was released that same day because he was gonna go to work. In my head, if he's gonna go to work, if he's got a job, what's he doing breaking into businesses? Because he broke into mine, and I believe Sissy's at the same night. And that's one of my concerns. The other is, I know that the police department is understaffed. That's what I've been hearing. But we'd like more coverage downtown, not only at night, that's when the majority of the crimes occur, but also in the daytime. There's a dance academy for little girls just up the street from us, and cars go by there every day. I mean, and some of them are speeding, and it's dangerous for those kids. And also, the majority of the businesses downtown are run by women. My wife is our business for the most part. I'm in and out almost every day, but I'm not there all the time. Every other business, Nest Feathers, Three Sisters, the Dance Academy, it's all run by women, and we have noticed different people walking around the downtown area, people that we have not seen before, that God knows where they're coming from. There are certain people that walk down the street, we know them. There's a gentleman that walks every morning, every afternoon, sometimes with his granddaughter. We know him, we know who he is. But there are some strange people walking around, people that are unfamiliar to us. And that's basically what I wanted to get across today. And like I said, I appreciate the police department. They're doing as the best thing they can, the best job they can, but we would appreciate a little bit more patrolling in the downtown area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Carr.
Hi, I'm Cindy Carr. I own Nest Feathers next door to the antique store downtown. Thank you all for letting me speak. I am just going to also say that we are, I employ eight lovely women, and for the first time since I've had the store, which has been nine years, some of my employees are too afraid to work for me. They're too afraid to work downtown. They, we have scary people coming in almost on a daily basis. They're scaring us. My neighbor to the left was broken into two nights ago. My neighbor to the right was broken in last week. Sissy's has been broken into three times. Both of our pharmacies downtown have been broken into. I commend you. I commend you, police officers, for everything that y'all do, and I truly believe y'all are doing a fantastic job. But I want council and y'all to know that we are scared. I am debating on whether I should even stay open because I'm worried about my staff. And I don't know if we need more police officers. That's not my call to make. I just want y'all to hear from me that we're scared. We're scared at work, and we're scared when we go home what we're gonna find in the morning. Thank you, and God bless y'all especially.
Thank you. I don't wanna pronounce this wrong. Ms. H-O-R-W-E-D-E-O?
Horwester.
Corbin.
[laughter]
I actually would've pronounced it right, just so you know.
Pardon me?
I would've pronounced it right, I just didn't wanna...
You have to say it three times, really fast. I'm Eileen, I own Three Sisters, and again, I commend all police officers. You put your life on the line every single day, every single day, and it breaks my heart to think that as hard as you're working, you need to have more support than what you're getting. I have called 911 in concerns of a man that walks down Main Street with no shirt on. I was coming out of my store one day, and I met with this man, and he doesn't walk on the sidewalk, he walks down the middle of the street. And he's cursing, and he's yelling, and he's throwing his hands, he has no shirt on. Scared me to death. I ran back inside, told the girls, "I'm gonna call 911." I had to leave the store, they locked the door, they're petrified. I called 911, I'm put on hold twice. Finally, the girl comes back and says, "Okay, now, what was it you were complaining about? Are you kidding me?" So I tell her again, she puts me on hold again. Comes back and says, "Oh, okay, okay, now this is about somebody walking on Main Street." "Yes, ma'am, I would really appreciate if you would send someone to check this individual out. I'm Eileen Horwiddle, Three Sisters Boutique. Please have someone get back with me." Never heard another word. I don't know how long ago it was, it's been months ago, there was an incident on Main Street, and I don't know if I'm correct in saying, I think it started at El Castillo, some individuals, I don't know if they were on the roof, but anyway, we had police cars up and down Main Street. And one of my girls said, went outside, and she said, "Is something going on? Should we be concerned?" "Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, there's nothing to be worried about." So she said, "Well, it's just two women inside, and if there's something we need to know, I wish you'd tell..." "Oh, no, no, nothing's wrong." So after a few minutes, the police have dispatched themselves some other place, and about an hour later, we hear someone drop on our roof and run. But it's the guy y'all are looking for. My girl calls the chief of police and says, "Well, did you ever stop to think that maybe he was hiding in the grass, in the tall grass between us and the old KBOP building?" And he said, "Well, we just never thought of that." So I, along with Cindy and the rest of us that have businesses downtown, this is insane. I have half a million dollars invested in my building with property. I'm like Cindy, I don't know if I'm gonna continue this or not. I'm not getting any help from anybody. Downtown has been forgotten. I thank you for listening to me, and again, guys, God bless you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips.
I think most of you know me, I'm the owner of the Good Health Store. And I was just asked to let you know of all of the businesses that have been broken into and/or robbed since August the 12th. Katie's Virginia Twins has been broken into twice. She was hit the same morning that we were hit. My store is right next to Center Pharmacy, and my father's Treatment Center is right next to that. They did over $2,000 worth of damage just trying to get into the pharmacy, and then, of course, this pharmacy suffered quite a bit of loss from that. So you have Genesis Health Center that was broken into, you have Center Pharmacy, Katie's Virginia Twins, times two. The Cutting Corner was broken into a day or two later. Sissy's has been hit three times. Once upon a time, was hit just the other night, and then, two nights ago, Rexco was attempted, and I think they were caught before they actually got in and did any damage, but they were in the process. Those two people, I think they were two, what I saw on video, were the same ones that attempted and got into our place from Houston, from what I understand. But I do want to let Mr. Pearson and Mr. Sanchez know that we have had terrific follow-up. Lieutenant Cole, I don't see him, I saw him earlier, has been very good about coming and informing us. He's brought Mr. Rupel with him, and they have done a terrific job of keeping us informed of what's going on, working with them too to get videotape on other things to help with identifying people. But I think you just, as individual council members, I didn't know if you knew exactly how many times people have been broken into just since the 12th of August. And that's a lot. This is not our sleepy little town anymore. We need help. I'm scared to death too, just like the rest of them. I am scared to death. Ninety percent of the time, I'm by myself. Yes, there's people in the pharmacy, but if somebody comes to me, I have no protection. We spent $3,000 today upgrading our system. We shouldn't have to do that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Other comments?
How do you get a chance to sign in?
Could I get your name?
David Padei, P-A-D-E-I-L-L-A.
Ready?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. My name's David Padei, I'm a Pleasanton resident. I've been here seven years. My wife and I are in law enforcement. We have a great working relationship with Chief Sanchez and the rest of the Pleasanton Police Department and the Jardanton Police Department. I work with these guys on a regular basis. Matter of fact, today, I was talking to his staff today, and I can't say whether or not they're understaffed. I mean, that's for the chief and the city manager, but it's what I would, you know, I did hear you say that there's a slight increase for public safety budget when I came in, but I was hoping I would hear something a little bit more, that there would be more of an increase. These guys need the best equipment that they can get, they need the best training that they can get, and if we're gonna retain the best police department and the best police officers in the county, they need those things. They need to pay, they need the benefits, they need the equipment. Otherwise, we're not gonna keep them, they're gonna go someplace else. So I would like for, you know, the council and city manager to maybe review that, those items, and get these guys the best thing, the best equipment that they need, and a budget for extra training. You know, I have not been the victim of a crime like all of these folks, but from what I'm hearing, you know, these guys need everything, they need all the help that we can get, so they, you know, they can't do it on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Magel.
I'm sorry, Jimmy Lake, Jimmy Magel, 1542 Sandy Lane, also 120 North Smith, owner and operator at Rexco Pharmacy. We've been a victim three times this week. One of them was Saturday night. We didn't discover this until Sunday afternoon. Someone came by and took off the exterior lights on my drive-through, knocked them all out. Luckily, nobody came in. We were able to go ahead and get the lights fixed on Monday. Monday night, we had my neighbors down the street, Sissy's Antique Store, broken into. At the same time, the next night, we got a call about 12:15 from the police department that we had suspicious activity in the area, which they were able to apprehend one of the suspects, and we're grateful for that. We've got, been here almost 25 years, the pharmacy's had never been hit three times in one week like this with different things, so we've got a problem. My question would be, if there's anything we, as downtown merchants, can help you guys with, let us know. We stand ready to go, and we appreciate what you're doing. That's all I have. I just, you need to be aware of the concerns and take good care of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? If there's none, move on to item number nine, which is presentation and discussion of the delinquent tax report. Mr. Rucha.
Mayor, Council, thank you. This is the annual tax report, and this year we have U.C. council members, so I'm gonna go through this and then the process, what we do as a deliberate tax collector. We had a booklet that we provided to your packet, I'm gonna show it on page six, just to get a better idea of exactly how the process works. October of last year, your tax statements go out for 2014 taxes. On February 1st of this year, 2015, they become delinquent. Between February and end of June, they start collecting penalty and interest. On May of 2015, a required statutory notice is mailed out, which is called a 3307 notice. What that notice is, is letting the taxpayer know that the 2014 taxes are delinquent, and they will be turned over to our collections with additional penalty on July 1st. So on page six, if you see the May 2015, which says 33.07 notice, as of this year, we had 732 that were still delinquent on the 2014s for the dollar amount. That notice is mailed out, hopefully they come into the city tax office, make the payments or set up some type of payment contract. In July 1st, whoever hasn't paid up their taxes and are not considered delinquent and turn over to us. So on July 2015, we have 407 tax accounts that are ready to be mailed on, totaling $140,000. This 407 only includes the 2014s, not anyone who's previously delinquent, or we have under tax litigation, or current repayment contract, or having appraisal issues, or have over 65 exemptions, et cetera. Behind that, page seven on, are the examples of each type of letter that are mailed out. Behind that, page seven on, are the examples of each type of letter that are mailed out. So in July, the tax rolls are turned over to me. The real property, we send out letters, the business personal property, we send out letters. Business personal property counts, those are businesses, their equipment, what they're used to run the business are taxed also. Real property, if they don't get our payment contract, we'll file suit and foreclose against the property. However, business personal property, we send out the letter, and one thing I do is do what's called a walk and talk. I go out to the business, it's a two-fold activity, to go out to see if the business is still open, what's in the business, to talk to the taxpayer, to set up a payment contract, or if we need to, we need to seize the business personal property. A lot of times, when you go to the business, you look at, you go inside, you see the value of the property and see what's in the business. Basically, I'm there to let them know, you're overvalued, there's nothing for us to actually seize, contact the appraisal district, maybe you have still time to protest the valuation to lower your tax amount. If that's not the case, if they are properly valued, they have property in, and the business equipment is in there, they can either want to do two things, one, set up a payment contract, pay in full, or what I'm doing is doing a tax warrant to seize, either with the sheriff's office, the cash on hand at that point, or any of the equipment to take and sell. Within Bear County, I mean, out of Sculston County, I've done three warrants the past two months already. I have probably two more within the city, a may due. I have the documents filed, but we're still working with those individuals, because the equipment there is not something that'd be worth taking. We want to get them on a payment contract and get them forward. So that's the process as far as that. On page 14, we have listings over the years of all the payment contracts, those that have been paid, the dollar amounts that are remaining due. Page 16, and also on page 17, the tax roll is governed by the appraisal district, so all addresses are from the appraisal district, they are sent over to the taxing authority. So we base the mailings based upon that. We do the mailings, we'll get return mail. When we get return mail, we do the due diligence, and we do a skip tracing to find and locate the new addresses of the owners. Now, we'll change the addresses on our site and mail to the new owners, however, we cannot change the addresses on the appraisal roll. When the taxpayer contacts us or contacts the tax office, say, hey, you found us, I never got a delinquent tax notice, we notice that the address is wrong, well, it's up to them to determine, to go to the appraisal district to change that address. We cannot change that address. The taxpayer has to go to the appraisal district to change that address. But we do try to locate the individuals while they're out there. On page 18 is our title research.
What title? The way we file suit is of the new property, you get the title from the county clerk's office, and it's included per title orders and all due orders.
So we do have to file suit, we have all the proper parties have an interest in the property. We serve them with the lawsuit, once they are served, we take it to judgment. If we take a judgment, we can then set it for sale. At any time to this process, they can make a payment contract, or they can pay in full, or sometimes they're qualified for overdue five exemptions, or are taxed deferred, depending on their status. If that's the case, the lawsuit's dismissed, or the lawsuit is non-suited because of their qualifications. On page 19 through 20 is basically the litigation we've gone through for the past year, the lawsuits when they were filed, and who they're filed against. On page 21 is a listing of the notice of seizures, we did eight within the city, and some of them, legal motion in order for attorney aliments to be pointed to the unknown owners in our lawsuits. On page 22 and 23, all the way through 29, are basically all the litigation we did within the year, our trial settings and what occurred at each trial docket, so everything's there to review. And then on page 30, 31 are the three tax sales. We reviewed 39 properties. 26 were approved by the tax office to be set for sale. So that doesn't mean we're going to set it for sale. What we do is, because they got approved because there's no payment contract, they haven't done anything to, do anything to pay off these taxes. We sent out a notice that we're going to set it for sale to get on a payment contract. So for instance, on April 1st docket, we had set 26 letters, out of those 26, only 12 were listed to be set for sale. No one contacted us, no one made a payment contract, so those properties were set for sale. Though every, well, three properties were pulled, because they, once they got the property to be sold, then they went and made a payment contract. So those were pulled. So three properties were pulled, payment agreements, one was paid, was paid in full. Eight properties out of that batch were sold for the minimum bid. Six properties were struck off to the taxing authorities, and two other properties were sold. When a property is struck off, let's say, for example, we have a property set for sale with an amount of taxes due, the minimum bid is $10,000. We set it for sale for the minimum bid of $10,000. It goes to public auction at the courthouse steps, no one bids on the property. If no one bids on the property, it gets what is called struck off to the taxing. All the taxing entities have now have an interest in the property. It becomes tax exempt. The goal at that point is trying to get it back on the tax. Last, I was here last week on those three properties, not last, I'm sorry, the last meeting, to get, again, that was the same process, there were struck off properties. They put a lesser bid in or pay the full amount to get it back on the tax roll to start bringing back revenue to the city. On page 33, all the bankruptcy filings, there's only, there's two bankruptcy filings. Within October through July, we have some other pending, there's a total of maybe seven city accounts in an active bankruptcy. Again, we file our claim in the bankruptcy, we're the first to get paid in the bankruptcy, so your interest as far as the taxes are secured when we file in the bankruptcy area. I included a separate sheet of paper, because it was an update from the last one, I handed it out, the one I had is missing two of the months. These are the collections for the last few years.
Are you updated?
The old one that was in the packet, I handed out the new one. Included July through August. As of right now, we're over $127,000 for the year. And you can see, we have a history of every year. Again, these numbers are from the tax office, these aren't our numbers, these are from the tax office, which we get from the number. That concludes my presentation. And again, for the new members, do you want me, I do this annually, you want me to start doing quarterly, monthly? Or if you have any questions, just give me a call anytime.
Questions for Mr. Rocha? Thank you. Thank you.
Item number 10, Discussion, Action, Direct City Staff to Place Stop Sign at the Intersection of Colony and Gateway Drive Facing West Road to Bring An Ordinance for Consideration and Possible Adoption. Chief Sanchez. I see that you're asking us to direct the staff to put the stop sign up?
Yes, sir. I'm going to be winded by that.
Another Earl.
Yeah. Council, you have the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to direct the city staff to place a stop sign facing westbound at northeast corner, the Colony and Gateway intersection.
Is that clear? They moved and signed to direct the city staff to place a stop sign facing westward on the northeast corner of Colony and Gateway intersection. Any discussion? Chief, would you like to add anything?
No, sir, no, ma'am.
All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number 11, Discussion, Action, Direct City Staff to Present A Resolution For Consideration and Possible Adoption Of An Education Assistance Program. And you're asking us to consider and possibly adopt.
I was hoping Mr. Best would say.
He's getting there.
We'll wait.
I know it was rough on you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Several years ago, the council began to increase the benefit plan for employees because they saw the benefit in our most precious resource, and that is our employees. Today, council has increased the retirement provision of our plan two times, one at the suggestion of the staff in 2012, one at the asking of the council this year. We increased holidays, we increased the secondary life insurance plan, we developed a market study based on the mayor's initiative to hand every employee their career, however they wanted it. Many employees have taken quite a bit of advantage of that. Our hybrid pay program consists of a STEP program, much like the military and civil service, as well as a comprehensive certification, licensing, and education pay module. This year, we moved to the STEP authorized by council in this budget to bring to you an education assistance program. This education assistance program would be in reference to university classes, college classes. They would have to come from an accredited university. The reasons we are asking for this is no secret to anybody, to develop a more well-educated workforce and well-trained employee, to experience career and professional growth, and to provide the best service possible to our citizens. There are three or four major components of any education assistance program, eligibility, the degree plans, reimbursement, and the processes to go through each. There's a draft of the education assistance program in your packet, beginning on page 64. I won't go through it exhaustively, I know you all have reviewed it, but basically, an employee who wants to take college or university classes would obviously have to go and speak with an admissions officer at a university or a college, present a degree plan to their department head. Once the department head reviewed the degree plan, then it would go to Human Resources for disbursement to the finance director in the city manager's office. At that point, the finance director primarily with the city manager, with input from Human Resources and the department head, would review the degree plan and either sign off on it or not, based on the degree plan being in their career field, or helping them to advance their career into more professional and administrative positions. In other words, it needs to be related to their job. Once approved, then the employee can enroll in the university or college of their choosing, based on that degree plan and where it comes from. Tuition reimbursement rates would be at the Texas A&amp;M San Antonio tuition and fee schedule, a state university. In other words, if someone went to a private university and tuition fees and books were more expensive than the state plan, the reimbursement would be on the state tuition fees. We all know the cost of some private universities. Our citizens can't be expected to fund that, and the council certainly wouldn't want to consider that. The, there are some restrictions in the plan. We want to restrict employees to two classes or six semester hours unless otherwise approved by the city manager's office. And we understand there are some internet degree plans where folks can work from home at their own pace, takes a lot of the exhaustive nature out of traveling to classes and traveling home from classes, but that would be reviewed through the city manager's office. Our intent here is to still have a fully energized, working employee while still realizing their dreams of career advancement. As a working employee going through a graduate program who took nine semester hours one semester because I wanted to prepare properly to write my thesis, I can tell you that my spouse said no more, and I was really exhausted by the 1st of April. It really takes it out of me. Now, I was going to traditional classroom activity. So that's why that provision's in there. The other part of the plan is how do we reimburse? The employee will turn in original receipts where they pay for classes, fees, and books. At the end of the semester, when they produce a passing grade from the university, it'd be 100% reimbursement of fees, tuition, books, based on the state tuition rates and fees from Texas A&amp;M San Antonio. We will reimburse it 100% for As, Bs, and Cs, all passing grades. There is some samples of degree plans that will be accepted, I won't be redundant there, but, you know, what would we not accept? Nursing, astronomy, philosophy, anthropology, art history, and some of those others that really don't relate in any way to us. Mayor and Council, your options are before you. The recommendation from staff is to direct us to present a resolution to the city council of Pleasanton, Texas, for the consideration and possible adoption of an education assistance program to become effective December 1st, 2015. Why December 1st? It's those employees who want to engage the city and enter into this plan, time to get their degree plans, time to meet with admission counselors, time to get admitted, and time to register for the spring. I'll stand for any questions, Mayor.
I do. What do we have in place for certificate programs?
What do we have in place for?
For certificate programs.
That is all through professional training and professional development in the operations and maintenance budget.
Okay. Just wanted to add there. Ms. Prasivka.
Mister, I have a question about if an employee's decided to change a position, let's say, he's a meter reader, or they're a meter reader, and they want to be in the financial area, that is still...
That would be considered a related degree?
Related, as long as it's within...
It's not only to provide them the assistance and the opportunity to advance within their demographic of the job, but also to advance into other professional and administrative positions as well.
Other questions?
I have another question. And is there any provision or any time that the employee is trying to, do they have to stay here longer than, are they...
There is a provision, I believe, if they decide to leave the city within the two years, I believe it is, let me get to it, then they would have to agree to pay that last semester's fees, let's see, they have to sign an agreement with the city to stay two years.
Okay. I believe that's what I read, too.
Let me find it. But there is a provision where they have to sign an agreement to stay two years. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's it.
Other questions? It's on page 66 of the packet.
Yeah. Yeah. There is a provision about that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to direct city staff to present a resolution for consideration and possible adoption of an education assistance program.
It's been moved and signed, direct city staff to present a resolution for consideration and possible adoption for an education assistance program. Any discussion? None will proceed. If the vote is in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the employees, I will tell you, I am a product of education assistance, and this will severely impact the future development of our employees, and I applaud all of them who are doing all they can at this time to increase their certifications, licensing, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number 12, Discussion, Action, Direct City Staff to Present A Resolution Electing Not To Require The Remittance Of Peg Fee By Holders Of The Texas Issued Certificate Of Franchise Authority.
Mayor, briefly, this is in reference to Comzoon, the recognized franchisee of cable, and they're going to provide internet and voiceover IP to the city. They came to us about a year ago, they're beginning to retrofit the city here soon. They, years ago, the state legislature authorized a 1% tax to be collected by cable operators and returned to municipalities for the funding of city or municipality information channels.
And we don't need that.
Well, it was generally geared towards the larger cities, because in the larger cities, with so many cable subscribers, you do have enough funding to fund these. In the smaller cities, we don't, but they have already told us, they will provide a public access channel for us, we're just asking to waive that 1% fee.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to direct city staff to present a resolution to the city council of Pleasanton, Texas, for consideration and possible adoption to waive the 1% peg fee for Comzoon.
Second.
Directive, signal, direct city staff to present a resolution to the city council of Pleasanton, Texas, for consideration and possible adoption to waive the 1% peg fee for Comzoon. Any discussion? None will proceed. If the vote is in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is ordinances and resolutions. Item number A is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1149, amending Civic Center rules, fees rules in current, amending Civic Center fees rules and regulations. I'll get it out in a minute. And ordinance number 15-1149 is an ordinance to the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, repealing and replacing ordinance number... of the City of Pleasant, Texas, repealing and replacing ordinance number fourteen dash eleven oh-three, establishing fees, rules, and regulations for the use of the City of Pleasant and Civic Center.
Is it just this? It's just that. Okay. Mister Mayor.
Mister Best.
I move to adopt ordinance number fifteen eleven forty-nine, amending Civic Center fees, rules, and regulations.
Second.
Moving second to adopt ordinance number fifteen dash eleven forty-nine, amending Civic Center fees, rules, and regulations. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. If the motion is in favor, the motion please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Resolution is adopted. Item number B is second reading and adoption of ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty, authorizing the collection fees and the amount of thirty percent of debts and accounts receivable such as unpaid fines, fees, court costs, forfeited bonds, and restitution. And ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, authorizing the collection of fees and the amount of thirty percent of debts and accounts receivable such as unpaid fines, fees, court costs, forfeited bonds, and restitution ordered paid by municipal courts serving the city, the amount in cases in which the accused has failed to appear, one, as promised under chapter A, subchapter A, chapter five forty-three, transportation code or other law. Item number two, in compliance with a lawful written notice to appear issued under article fourteen dash zero six Bravo Texas Code of Criminal Procedures or other law. Item number three, in compliance with a lawful summons issued under article fifteen dash zero three Bravo Texas Code of Criminal Procedures. Four, in compliance with a lawful order of a court serving the city. Or five, as specified in a citation summons or other notice authorized by section six eight two point zero zero two Transportation Code that charges the accused with a parking or stopping offense when such debts, accounts receivable, and amounts are more than sixty days past due and have been referred to an attorney or other vendor for collection.
Mister Mayor.
Mister Best.
I move to adopt ordinance number fifteen dash one one five zero, authorizing the collection fee and the amount of thirty percent of debts and accounts receivable such as unpaid fines, fees, court costs, forfeited bonds, and restitution.
Moving second to adopt ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty, authorizing the collection of fees and the amount of thirty percent of debt, accounts receivable such as unpaid fines, fees, court costs, forfeited bonds, and restitution. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. If the motion is in favor, the motion please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item C is the first reading of ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-one, adopting a budget for the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, for fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and sixteen. Ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-one is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, adopting a budget for the City of Pleasant, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and sixteen, providing for the intra and inter funds and departmental transfers, and providing for investment of city funds. Let me get past that. Item number D is first reading of ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-two, providing the ad valorem tax rate for, of point four eight nine seven seven zero per one hundred dollars of valuation for FY two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, providing the use and the support of municipal government, and providing for the interest and sinking fund. And ordinance number fifteen dash eleven...
Fifty-two.
Find it in the packet.
Fifty-two.
Page one fifty-two?
Yeah, level eighty-two.
All right. I'm only fifty pages behind you. Ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-two is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, levying taxes for the use and support of the municipal government, and providing for the interest and sinking fund for the year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and appropriating each levy for its specific purpose, providing for the collection and deposit of taxes, establishing a discount for early payment, and establishing a home state exemption for those sixty-five years of age and older. Item number E is first reading of ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-three, setting a stop sign at the intersection of Colony and Gateway Drive. Ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-three is an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, setting a stop sign at the following intersection, setting a penalty for violation and repealing ordinances and conflict. Item number F is reading and adoption of resolution number one forty-four dash one five, establishing an education assistance program for city staff. Resolution number one forty-four dash one five is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, authorizing the formation of an education assistance program for the City of Pleasant employees, setting parameters, and an application process for the issuing of the reimbursement.
Mister Mayor.
Mister Best.
I move to adopt resolution number one forty-four dash one five, establishing an education assistance program for city staff.
Second.
Moving second to adopt resolution number one forty-four dash one five, establishing an education assistance program for city staff. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. If the motion is in favor, the motion please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Item number G is reading and adoption of resolution number one forty-five dash one five, electing not to require the remittance of peg fee for holders of state-issued certificates of franchise authority. And resolution number one forty-five dash one five is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, electing not to require the remittance of a peg fee for holders of the state-issued certificate of franchise authority. Mister Best.
I move to adopt resolution number one four five dash one five, electing not to require the remittance of a peg fee by holders of a state-issued certificate of franchise authority.
Second.
Moving second to adopt ordinance number one forty-five dash one five, electing not to require the remittance of a peg fee for holders of a state-issued certificate of franchise authority. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. If the motion is in favor, the motion please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Resolution is adopted. Item number fourteen, departmental reports.
Our public works directors report this evening. Mayor will be followed by Mister Agary with the Civic Center Departmental Report, and will move to that, from that point, to the mayor's and the manager's message.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Evening.
The utilities department, all our wells are operating at a hundred percent for the month of August. For the month of August, we had an average daily production of two point eight million gallons. We also had crews that are installing seven new water services in the two-hundred block of Virginia Street. We replaced it from an old two-inch galvanized water line to a six-inch water main located across the street. The two-inch water line is being abandoned due to its failing condition from corrosion. Also, on our water main project, we received the approval from Tech Dot and have resumed the construction, water line construction, as of last Thursday. We're at twenty-six twenty, two thousand six hundred and twenty feet right now. The street CIP project, B and D Construction, moved from one ship road and has begun construction on Cynthia Drive. Landmark, our water tower contractor, is finishing up the welding on the inside of the tank, mostly the bottom ring and the roof. Approximately two weeks from now, the painters will return to finish painting the inside of the tank. Also, the street department crews continue to work on service orders, tree trimming along bus routes, and mowing drainages and rideaways. Also, our parks department finished up the mulching on the landscape for City Hall and continue maintenance at Tuau Ball Fields and River Park. That's my report.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Weider.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Evening.
For the month of August, we were pretty busy. It was the end of summer, so I believe we had a bunch of quinceañeras, wedding receptions. It kept us going all through the month of August. In your report, you'll be able to see the number of rentals we had for the main hall, the meeting room. Both are very active, and I believe in the summer is our busiest time of the year. And with that coming to a conclusion, we're now entering a more mellow part of the season. But we are still constantly getting people coming in, booking for next year summers, next to the beginning of the year. We're constantly having people come in and commend on the facility that we have that's very, very nice, sharp-looking, constantly getting comments on that. And pavilions as well, we are having numerous rentals throughout the summer. Again, the summer's coming to an end, so the busiest part is slowing down. We are still getting rentals, though, through the pavilion part. The swimming pool as well, unfortunately, it's closed for the summer, open swim, but we do have water aerobics that it's going throughout the year, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays that are held between six and seven P.M. We were pretty successful this year with the pool, with party rentals. We're still getting phone calls about pool rentals, that are still wanting to rent the pool. So that's a sign that we're doing pretty good here at the city pool, and we're looking forward to many events that we still have throughout this year. We're not done. Christmas is coming up, and we are having parties coming up, we're having receptions still coming in, and we are good to go. We're rolling, pretty good.
Questions? Thank you, River.
Mayor and Council, I'll defer the airport layout plan to the mayor during his message. We continue to submit information to Mrs. Marshall on the utility rate study. We are working with her. She's analyzing a lot of the data right now as far as consumption rates, cost, capital cost, and that type of thing. And we expect that study to probably go on for the next thirty to forty-five days before we're ready to bring her back for a report to council. We want to thank you for the education assistance program and your consideration this evening. There are a lot of employees that we feel like will be able to take advantage of that program, and that's what career growth is all about, is improving oneself. The boot campaign, most all the boots are in. We have one pair that was supposed to have arrived today and to be shipped to us. I think that the boots have began to be distributed here this afternoon. I know the mayor tried his Air Force pair on this morning, and...
That was today?
Huh?
That was this morning?
That was this morning, Monday.
I thought it was yesterday.
And Mister Flores tried his on, and it looked like he was about three feet off the ground. I think they were PF Flyers when he left the building. And we have had about a ninety percent of our employee pool, along with the council, participate in this campaign, and I think the mayor wants to announce tonight possibly the gathering for a photo over in front of the Freedom Center, in front of the military symbols, or the military emblems. Cardinal badge update, we think we're about there. There has just been a number of mapping issues with CGIS and the folks at the state level to guard our system from any intrusion. We think we're very close. A week ago, the U.S. Marshals hard drive was put online. We provide service to the U.S. Marshals on a yearly basis, and we look forward to that training, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. Chronos update, we've gone through several cycles of electronic payroll and timekeeping. We have had some programming issues. We're working through those. The last pay period was processed with little fanfare, and so far, it's working to deliver exactly what we wanted. The programming issues and folks getting paid more than they were working, so it was in the programming, and we have just about dissected that, and we'll begin sorting those numbers out very shortly. That's your message this evening, and I just will add, Mayor, we appreciate all the comments this evening. For those who might still be here, I would just say that this council has spent over a half a million dollars on the police department just in the last year and a half alone, and that's in regards to the badge software program, vehicles, rifles, and all those other things that go into giving our police the protection they need, but not only the tools in the field to do their job, and we appreciate that. I will announce this evening that the latest Tahos that were purchased by the council are out front for anyone to see. I think the rifle mounts are in them, is that right, chief? Just in time for deer season, right?
Yes.
Anyway, I will tell you that our police did not have those, did not have that equipment before. They do now, but we're not stopped. We're not going to stop. And I will tell you that those that are still here, and I appreciate that, their training budget has been increased exponentially over the last two years based on this new market study program, and they continue. We've had a number of policemen upgrade their training, upgrade their certificates, and get it paid for, and we thank you for your confidence.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions for Mister Pearson?
Mister Mayor.
Mister Best.
Mister Pearson, could we elaborate a little bit on the badge program and what that means to having, and chief can do this as well, but just for those people who don't know, what that means for our officers in the field?
Chief, you want to take it, or you want me to take it?
Your voice carries well.
Where's the captain at? The badge software program is a program that will be housed on laptop computers in each one of the patrol vehicles. Originally, we bought a program about four years ago that we had to switch from because of interface problems. We not only bought the badge program, which is the software program that tracks all activity that the police do within the police department, it's now going to be on these laptop computers, and we increased the number of laptops in the vehicles, I think to every patrol vehicle that's out there now, correct, chief? This badge program in itself not only can track criminal history as far as any incidents we've had with folks that we stop, or any other cardinal badge user in the state of Texas. It also provides a better safety factor for those officers in the field through the GPS tracking unit. The chief is able to program that GPS tracking unit to look at certain parameters, such as if that vehicle stays stopped for over fifteen minutes at a time, that dispatcher's getting a red light on a huge monitor above that dispatch center, and they will notify that officer, hey, are you okay? Is everything okay on the field? If an officer is cruising along at twenty-five, thirty miles an hour and is all of a sudden doing seventy-five or eighty, and that dispatcher has not had a call from that officer, that dispatcher will get a red light on that monitor to contact that officer as well. There are some other proprietary measures within that system, but if we went public with them tonight, we'd be telling the bad guys about it, but I will tell you, there are some parameters where they can roll up on the bad guys, and the bad guys would have never heard it on the radio, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, we'll move on to six teams. Mayor's message, I'm going to step down for two proclamations, and then I'll come back up for the rest of it.
Oh.
All right, proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch, Next Door, Associate ADT, and Funflicks are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October sixth, two thousand and fifteen, titled National Night Out, and whereas the thirty-second annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity, the City of Pleasant has joined forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Pleasant plays a vital role in assisting Pleasant Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Pleasant, and then supporting National Night Out locally. And whereas it is essential for all citizens of the City of Pleasant to be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Pleasant. And whereas police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, therefore, I, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October sixth, two thousand and fifteen, is National Night Out in the City of Pleasant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Pleasant, Texas, whereas Kiory Malformation ...
Would you like me to tell everybody a little bit about what you've been through? You tell me if you want to do it or not.
I can.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd just like to say with Mrs. Lozano's permission, this is something that many of us have never heard anything about. Mrs. Lozano started noticing some pain in her left shoulder and left arm about three Easters ago. A year later, with an MRI, she was sent to a neurosurgeon who told her, you have Kiory Malformation Type One. What? Okay. I can tell you... all she could do was apologize. "Mr. Pearson, I can't open my eyes. It hurts so much." And so, Maria, my hat's off to you, and I'm so glad you're a survivor, and, uh, you're one of the treasures of this city, and it broke my heart to see you laying there that day. And I thank you for surviving this and carrying that message forward. I salute you.
Item number C is, uh, Airport Advisory Board Update. Uh, we've been working on an airport realignment for about two years, and about a week ago, two weeks ago, Mr. Pearson finally spoke with somebody at Tech Dot Aviation who would be handling this, and they said, "Well, it's a marathon, not a sprint, so it's going to be another couple of years." And I didn't, didn't like the comment, so I called the state senator and the state representative, and the board met this morning, found out some things about our runway, and, uh, from, uh, Garver, who is our consultant, went up and talked to the senator, and he's, uh, he's going to be talking to those members at Tech Dot Aviation to help us continue to try to realign the runway. And item number D is the Boots Campaign. Uh, just a quick, for those, because there's about, what, ninety people, ninety-something people bought boots?
So.
We're going to try to get together, and I guess Mr. Pearson will coordinate it, uh, get together and everybody take a picture out by the, uh, Freedom Center and send it in. I don't know if you've been on the Boots Campaign website, but there's a picture of all the, uh, people from Shiner Brewery that they're standing out front, so we're going to try to mimic the same deal. We'll let you know when that happens. Uh, item number seventeen, Discussion Action to Donate the Use of the Civic Center by waiving all fees associated with rental of the facility for the PISD's Tri-City SAT Boot Camp on October first, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, City Council?
He made it up there before. Snuck up while I had my head down.
Have to speak? Pleasanton, uh, uh, ISD called and asked if we could, um, well, if they could use our Civic Center for a, uh, it's a boot camp-type training for SAT. They, uh, it's, uh, intensive training on taking the SAT and giving, uh, example exams and stuff like that. Um, it's pretty intensive, and they asked if we could do it at the Civic Center because, uh, they have been doing it at the, um, Performing Arts, but it's not a classroom setting. It's more theater seats, and they wanted more of a classroom setting. And, uh, of course, I said, uh, I would be glad to ask you guys. Um, and I think it's a worthwhile thing to, uh, have us on board and waive the fees for this and get our kids...
There's an interesting deal in your packet that seven questions can change the, the results by a hundred percent?
Yes.
Wow.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to donate the use of the Civic Center by waiving all fees associated with the rental of the facility for the PISD's Tri-City SAT Boot Camp on October one, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Just moving second to donate the use of the Civic Center by waiving all fees associated with the rental facility of the PISD's Tri-City SAT Boot Camp on October first, two thousand fifteen.
Sorry, the way the three schools are Pleasanton, Potteet, and Charlotte that have participated.
I think in doing this, they got the fee down from like a hundred and fifty to forty-five dollars.
Something like.
Yeah.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine?
Yeah.
Still a pretty significant savings.
Yes.
All right, any discussions?
Okay.
If none, we'll proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Peterson? Chief, your third walk. Presentation and discussion concerning National Night Out on October sixth, two thousand fifteen. This is the council workout. Why didn't y'all put all of this stuff together?
Yeah.
There'll be some weight to that.
No motion I can make on this.
Nope.
All right.
You know Chief's working out, because he could go this way. It's faster.
Thank you again, Mayor, council. Our third annual National Night Out, uh, will be October sixth, two thousand and fifteen, from six PM to eight-thirty PM. We'd like to invite everyone on the council, and the community, local businesses. We'd love to see you there. This is a great event that seems to be growing every year. Um, we're a little down on, on donations this year, uh, I guess because of the downturn in the oil and gas industry, but we're still out there hustling, trying to get, uh, some companies to donate some money, but this is entire, there's no cost to anyone to attend, uh, no cost to the taxpayer. It's all funded by donations. Uh, it started off, this is our third year. Uh, every year it seems like it's just getting bigger and bigger, and we're very proud of this event. A lot of work goes into it. Uh, a committee headed by Samantha Garcia, Amika Chapa, and Amy Osborne have been at it several weeks, working to get this together, and we've seen a lot of positive outcome from these events, especially with the really small children. They really enjoy it. They love the giveaways, the rubber wristbands, pencils, and coloring books. In fact, where's Anthony Gonzalez? Was it last night where the little boy came? Last night, this little boy, how old was he?
Six.
Six years old, shows up at the police department with his mom, and she says, "He wants to be a policeman when he grows up, and he bought y'all some pizzas." So, he walked in with five pizzas and gave them to, to...
Three.
Two. Then he's lost about forty pounds, but he, he's lost about forty pounds in the last several weeks. He's been working out real hard, and he looks great, and we're very proud of him, but he used it as a cheat night, and he ate pizza. And, you know, the lit- we, he's a little boy who, you know, we don't like to see kids afraid of the police. It's, you know, we don't like to sit, be in the grocery store. Behavior, I'm going to tell the policeman to take you to jail. That's not what we're about. And, uh, we've seen a lot of positive outcome from our, from our National Night Out events, and, uh, I'm very proud to work with, with these guys and gals. So, they're the best. I'll put them up against anybody's police department. Uh, these guys are really good, and, uh, they work hard every day for our citizens. And, uh, again, I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you. I hope you can make it. Uh, we hope to have good weather and hope to see everyone there.
And, and you want to give the times real quick?
The times will be from, we changed the times this year because, uh, we were running it from six to nine, but the cleanup was taken longer. Uh, Mr. Johnny Weezer's people always volunteer to help with the setup and breakdown, and so we ran it till eight-thirty this year so we can get people home at a, at a decent hour, a little bit earlier than, than usual, but, you know, all the city staff volunteers, every, every member of the city staff you see there that night, uh, is there on their own time. Uh, all the police officers there donate their time. That's how important they feel this is, to be members of our community.
So, on the sixth, from six to eight-thirty?
October sixth, from six PM to eight-thirty. That's my wife's birthday, so, even she said this was more important than her birthday.
She's volunteering, right, Chief?
No, I volunteer.
There you go. Happy birthday, your volunteer.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Thank you.
Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number nineteen, Discussion Action to Waive Fees for Pavilion Two, Close the River Park to vehicular traffic, and to allow temporary street closure of Adams Street and Second Street, U.S. Highway two-eighty-one, to North Chapman Street, seven-thirty AM to six-thirty PM, for the District Thirty Quadruple A Cross Country Meet on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, hosted by the Pleasanton ISD. Chief Sanchez.
If you don't mind, too. We did this last year. Uh, we provide the pace car and everything for, uh, for the track meet. Uh, there's only one part of the, portion of the race that actually does come out into the street, but everything is held in the park. We have an officer who's patrolling there who, while on duty, and, uh, it's a good deal. It's, uh, it's good for the school.
Sure.
And, uh, we're glad to help, and we're glad to be a part of it, and we recommend that y'all pass this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to waive fees for Pavilion Two, Close the River Park to vehicular traffic, and to allow temporary street closure of Adams Street from Second Street, U.S. Highway two-eighty-one, to North Chapman Street from seven-thirty AM to six-thirty PM for the District Thirty Four A Cross Country Meet on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, hosted by the Pleasanton Independent School District.
Second.
Moving, second to waive the fees for Pavilion Two, Close the River Park to vehicular traffic, and to allow temporary street closure of Adams Street from Second Street, U.S. Highway two-eighty-one, to North Chapman Street from seven-thirty AM to six-thirty PM for the District Thirty Four A Cross Country Meet on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, hosted by the Pleasanton ISD. Any discussion?
Mr. Wood.
Remember where North Chapman Street is?
When you come out, the main drive from the River Park, if you turn left, you go to Second Street or two-eighty-one. When you turn right, it's Chapman, right here.
Oh, right there.
Your immediate right, and then a left.
You just want to close it from there?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for a little while.
Okay.
Mr. Weezer has already, unbeknownst to him, but he'll have a bear...
He's already just been informed.
For where North Chapman?
Usually in these things, I remember to call Mr. Weezer that morning, and he scrambles and gets it done.
We're unmarked, Tahoe?
Oh, no.
We're not trading a vehicle.
Any other discussion? None will proceed to the vote. All is in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Item number twenty, Review of the Bills?
No, sir.
If there's none, item number twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Move to adjourn.
Moving, second to adjourn. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Meeting is adjourned at seven-twenty-three PM.